So first order of business is the CSE and CPSE reports from Executive Session.
Right, hold on.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The minutes, first hour, regular meeting on 12/16. Did anybody have revisions or edits?
On page one, we have a duplication of the Fudge of Allegiance was set to begin the regular session, and then we repeat that.
That is redundant. Quite the reasons for this.
Yeah, just get rid of the last sentence on the first paragraph.
Yes, thank you.
And then you caught the ones on the last page.
Yeah, Hannah did, yeah. Is there a motion to the fifth minute? Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Josh. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? I'm gonna exchange with a little here. And then our special meeting on 12/22. Very brief special meeting.
The resolution looks longer than the meeting by far. So I will recommend make your motion.
Thank you, Rick.
I'll second it. The only thing is, there's one spot where it says "he."
This is also a lawyer, not a detective.
That's right. I don't think you can change that. So just you may be referred to as a "he."
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Mike. All those in favor? Any opposed? Or questions? All right. Traitor reports.
Hi. Jonathan, how are you? So I'm trying to give you guys just because there are so many bits open right now. I'm trying to give you just, you know, status updates. So this is my status update for this month. All of our title grants have been fully approved. They were submitted and they got kicked back a little bit, and this is happening to like all of the districts. It's very low right now. So I'm excited. Those have been accepted. Everything is good with them. If you guys have any questions about what their grants are, let me know. So we had that special meeting to approve the resolution for the bond refunding in December, and that went ahead. So our bonds were sold to Roosevelt and Cross at a rate of 1.5%, which is a very favorable rate. We did really well. And then Roosevelt and Cross turns around and they resold the bonds to Time to Save Bank. So that's, it's nice to see a local bank coming through for us, and that worked really well. The bonds are right now being reviewed by the comptroller, and I think I may have just seen that it's either, it's with them and they're approving it, but they're just releasing the final documents on it. So the comptroller is anticipated to approve those. They review for, you know, to see if all of the boxes are checked, all of the right procedures were followed during the refunding, and they review the appropriateness of the rate as well. And Roosevelt and Cross is sort of recognized across the state as being like the standard for, you know, purchasing banks. The comptroller would frequently refer back to them as, you know, what does Roosevelt and Cross give for a rate? Oh, that's the rate. Okay, that's good. So we had a good binder. And the anticipated savings from this refunding is $23,000. So we did well. You guys will see in the consent agenda that there is a corrected action plan for you to approve that's related to the independent audit that was completed in October for the 6/30/21 fiscal year. Just a few things in there, and I'm sure you guys had a chance to read through. So I'm not gonna approve, but if you guys have any questions, let me know. That's all I have for you. You've got, you know, appropriation, status reports, and budget transfers. Let me know if there's anything you want me to elaborate on.
Thanks. Is there any questions from the appropriations or budget transfer? I had a question first on the additional board expense, and then I triangulated it with the NISCO, which is a great use of money. So just a quick search, no question. So.
Motion to accept the Traitor report.
Great. Take a second. Thanks, Kate. All those in favor?
All right.
All right, on to the warrants. So go through, follow them, and then do a, like, motion. So general fund is 8/32.
Page seven, invoice number is repair of windshield. Is that right?
It's kind of a field for us to put in an invoice number or other descriptive information. That was for a windshield that was broken. One of our teachers' windshield, she was parked in behind the fitness center, and a stray football took out her windshield. She was, and then couldn't get a replacement windshield. She has an older Subaru, and she was driving around looking through the cracks for, I think, months. And so I'm really happy she was able to get us that safer car after the name again for her.
That's great. I was just curious about why was it broken down that night?
Well, split it between the two, because, you know, it was football practice, so part of it was high school and the other part was athletic. It just broke up each time.
Great. Perfect sense. So who's saying you got a good quarterback?
Yeah.
Is it, oh, on page 11, is the NISCO, how long is that for the year?
Yeah. Yeah. For 2022. It goes January to December, not full year.
Great, thank you.
Page 12, the postal service.
Put just money on the meter.
For $5,000, we, that's one at a time?
We'll have about three months.
Okay. I thought we were buying the postal. Okay.
Those are forever.
I had a question on the timing of Carson irrigation on the bottom of 15. We don't do much irrigating in December. Was that past or looking forward to next year?
No. What can be else? I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look at that one, even what you guys know.
I think that has to do with the sprinkler heads on the football field. I can't be certain, but I know a lot is looking into because we have several of them broken. I'm not sure if that's related to that.
Holly, is that a rare success that you were actually able to get some tires and chains on a farm from Farm and Dirt?
It is. Those are the things I'm gonna talk about, but tires have tripled since August. Good times.
Yeah, we'll just drive a third as many miles, no problem.
Right.
Yeah. All right, federal funds, F16. And school lunch fund, C17. All right. Accept the motion. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Josh. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? We don't have our usual visitors today, so we can say hi to anybody online. Is anybody online?
Four people online.
Cool. Thanks for joining us. We have no considerations. So the consent agenda, including the additions that we got tonight. Is there anything here that anyone wants to hold out for separate consideration? So then open for any questions on the items in there. We talked to Angie Holmes in the second session, but sort of formally and officially, congratulations on her new gig, and we are very sorry to see her go.
Holly, are we keeping our heads above waters from the bus driver standpoint? Or are you having to go out every day?
I'm driving every day.
And Katie?
I'm driving through work every day, for something, whether it's a sport, an extra prep, or a regular run.
So you two are helping us stay afloat. Any more people be considered becoming a bus driver?
Yep, I have, we have two. We have one that's just stat licensed, that's, that you have the approval for.
Right.
And then I have two others that were training.
Okay.
So one will laugh a full time, the other one, like this one tonight, just wants something. But it's people.
I think you're keeping us in bus drivers more than some districts are doing.
Yeah.
It's not easy out there.
With Katie and I driving and with, we have two sub-drivers that are driving every day for us to put extra OC runs, that sort of thing, they're covered, so we're, we're going F-buck.
Okay, keep the pressure on.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Nate. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? More on that. Hey, Wayne, how's it going?
Well, thank you. Hey, much bad. Just wanna start out first, I didn't just talk a little bit about COVID the past month. Case has spiked. It was a very, I wouldn't say it was challenging, a month. We had a lot of, a lot of folks in the building who really stepped up and helped out. Coverage was very difficult at any time. We had upwards of eight to 10 faculty and staff out. Katie Anderson, who arranges the coverage of classes, she did a masterful job making sure, you know, classes were covered. Teachers, many teachers gave up their preps to assist in coverage. You know, didn't have to do that, but it was kind of an all hands-on deaf approach. And our faculty was great. No one complained. We all kind of understand we wanna keep school open, and we need to work together to do that. And with all the testing that we've been doing, you know. Nurse Annie's been doing a great job. She's been working very hard, and we were able to keep up with it. And we had some folks help, and I did some testing at one time, too. Just, you know, whenever we had parents that wanted to get their children tested, we'd be willing to do it. And so, you know, it was busy. Knock on wood, we had a good day today. So I'm starting to feel, hopefully, like things are heading in the right direction. But I think the folks who worked really hard to help us get through the past month deserve credit. This kind of follows up with the next item, which is crew update. Being able to run a successful crew program as we had it planned, it really relies on all the faculty to be there. Every faculty member had a crew of students. And when we have six, eight teachers out, you just can't do it. And with COVID being so unpredictable, we just figured at this time of night, that's just putting crew on pause for the rest of the year. Get through the year, and then see where we wanna go from there. But at this point, it was a great idea, and there's a lot of hard work put into it. It's pretty heartbreaking that we couldn't follow through with it this year, but it just, COVID was just too big a challenge for us.
Do you go back to homeroom?
Was that? No, we, we're fine. A matter of fact, I was thinking, even without crew, I was gonna get rid of homeroom. We don't need it. Kids can go to, they can go to first, right to first period, we can take attendance, and now it's not even there.
Homeroom and lunch are my two favorites.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, well, sorry about that.
I'm honest.
We'll add a few minutes on the lunches. One more update, the ag program, just wanted to let you know we're proceeding there. We have, we did the survey with the programs, the programs that were, they said they could offer welding, small engine repair, animal science, and environmental education. It was incredibly balanced in what the students wanted. So talking to T. Hanson, who's the Cornell Corporate Extension Executive Director, she says she has staff right now to run the animal science and the environmental ed program. So I said, well, we wanna get this going, let's take the programs that you have staff for. We also have Becky Eamon, who's very interested in being our teacher. She has an animal science background, she has a farm, so seems like a nice match. So we're gonna focus on those two programs. Becky and myself are gonna meet with T. and her team on February 2nd, and really start mailing down some plans for the, for the courses, so that we can get them on the course selection for students. So we are making progress, it's pretty exciting.
That's awesome. So will class start this school year or in the fall?
They'll start in the fall. Although I wouldn't mind, you know, we're definitely gonna get staff up there to see, because one of the things Corporate Extension offered is to allow field trips to support other courses, maybe science classes, or, you know, if, I don't know, elementary school teachers wanted to go there and take the kids on a field trip to farm, they can do that. So get teachers up there, see what's going on, and maybe, maybe take some students up there if there's any more questions about, you know, what the courses are gonna look like.
Wayne?
One more thing. So more specifically, is there any way we can integrate any Envirathon curriculum in those classes?
Well, I can certainly say I'm sure they'll work with the Envirathon. Envirathon's not with the club right now, so.
But any crossover, any like extra exposure to that content? If those are the kids, I mean, I think those might be the kids.
It seems like a natural fit with environmental education for, I would think that kids who wanna be in Envirathon would be drawn to that. So by that, yeah, they seem to mesh together pretty well. I would be surprised if kids who wanna be, who are in Envirathon, wouldn't want to join. They'd wanna join the environmental, so.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna make them, but it seems like it would be a natural fit. I'd be surprised if they wouldn't want to do that. And I can see our Envirathon team going up there often.
Yeah, for sure.
I did have one more item, but, oh, I'm sorry, Mike, did you have?
Just a quick one. I don't know if you've ever worked on a farm.
No.
But the summer happens to be, there's a lot of things going on on farms in the summer. Is there any thought about doing a program over the summer?
Well, that's interesting, because we're talking about the summer school, and I'm gonna be honest with you, it had not crossed my mind until right now. Someone said something about it, I'm not sure. So that's something I can certainly talk about as well. Yeah, it seems like we need to get, you know, the Corporate Extension on board, but it sounds like they've been very open to supporting anything we've wanted to do. So it's a good idea, thank you. And just the last item, I didn't put it in here, but our midterm exams are next week. Because there's no Regents exam, we don't have to run the typical midterm exam schedule. However, we're running it similar to our final exam schedule, which is two-period blocks over two and a half days. Doesn't change the schedule at all for students, except for the final test day, which is Friday, the 28th, is gonna be a half-day. They're gonna finish their last two-period block. And then the last half of the day, we've always, a lot of teachers time, we got a lot of tests to grade, we give them a half-day to support tests, and do a little gap analysis, see what the kids did well, and maybe where some of the gaps are. So there will be a half-day Friday, the 28th. And I've already sent a school messenger, I already sent that out today, both email, text, and a phone message.
Or just high school.
Or just high school, correct. Yeah, I made specific in seven, twelve. Make sure you put that in all my messages.
Thanks, Wayne. And next up, Katie.
Okay. So as you're probably sick of hearing me talk about, early release day, we focused on our new ELA curriculum. We're plugging along with that. We had great vertical conversations about a summary rubric, which is a constant, three through six. And they had a conversation about pinpointing the exact criteria they wanted to see at each of the grade levels, that were building the skill level. It was a little too broad and holistic for us. We really wanted to pinpoint exactly what each of the grade levels would be assessed on, based on what they're being taught. So they did a great job, and Carly Booth really led that work, and she put out the final draft of the rubrics that they put together today, and they look awesome. Pre-K through second grade used the early release time to do some structured exploration of the online portal that exists. There are a lot of components there that we haven't quite tapped into yet, because we've been more concerned about teaching the curriculum to the students, but there's some resources within that portal that they found to be really helpful, and they'll continue to explore that some more. Discipline referral data. Pete actually pulled this data together and shared with faculty and staff. And as you can see, our referrals have decreased quite a bit since our last typical school year, which was 2019, 2020. So that's where that first set of data came from. The second line of data is from this year. So you can see, and then I wrote a little bit about the things that we would attribute to that positive decline in behavioral referrals, quite a few things there. I think a lot of it comes down to, I know a lot of it comes down to our people and how they work with, with the students, from our teachers aides, to our classroom teachers, to the social worker, Ms. Holtby, who we now have with us full-time in the elementary school. That's made a huge difference for us. And then I wrote a little bit about our SST, our student support team, that needs weekly to pinpoint the students that are having the biggest social, emotional, behavioral concerns, and we use that team approach to support those kids. So sometimes, most often, those are the kiddos that have the most behavior referrals. So we really focus on them at a pretty high intensive level, working with families and the staff that we have at school, sometimes even outside resources when necessary. We are in the process of taking the winter diagnostic. I will look forward to updating you with some data next month. We took some time to look at data with students, and I did provide you with a graph that if you're a parent, this will mean a whole lot more to you next week when your kiddo comes home with their actual data graph from the first diagnostic, yep, in September, to the diagnostic that they just took. They'll be able to talk to you about that, because they did those in classrooms with their teachers.
I like your little suggestions on the back.
Yeah, no, not mine, I didn't make those up. Those came from my ready, but the kids, yeah, that was helpful to the kids, too. Comes right from my ready. We have a lot of resources and documents, so we pulled that from there, found it to be useful. And then we had an energy fair in the elementary school, the sixth-grade team put that on. That was on January 11th. It was really great to see the hands-on, project-based learning that the kids did to explore these different sources of energy and almost sell them to their families when they came in to do the energy fair, lot of games and projects, a lot of information and research. They did that same energy fair with the students during the day. It's nice to have families in the building and welcome people in. And then, much like Wayne said, Nurse Kristen and Nurse Annie, they've had a lot of extra work on their hands, and we've collaborated a lot, both buildings, just with changing protocols. It was a good week there, where things were really in flux, and they took a lot of phone calls, and she was very gracious and helpful with some families that wanted some answers that we didn't quite have at that point in time. So we made it through to now where we have some more concrete protocols that we're following, with the five-day and whatnot. They are just, like I said, very knowledgeable, very compassionate with the people inside the building, and then also the families and the communities, most importantly, the kids. But they definitely deserve a whole lot of credit. Okay.
A few kind of headlines I've seen on disciplinary are the opposite. The kids are really struggling to kind of comply and come back into the school environment. So it just speaks volumes to all the attention you're providing to the kids in need that we're having the opposite of all, so thank you, guys.
So order to Mr. P.
First, I wanna thank you for the approval of varsity club. I know the coaches, they worked hard on that proposal with, with it having a strong foundation in our athletic commission statement. As you read through the proposal, you saw the benefits that we saw as a team, me, myself, and the coaches. You know, and it really strives for getting down into our rec department to develop players at younger ages and support programs down there. And talking with the coaches, they have a strong will to do that with their varsity players. So I'm hopeful to see that develop in the next couple of months, and to have a presence down in the rec programs. We're sort of gonna start that a little bit. Tomorrow night, we have about, hopefully about 30 players from the youth commission basketball teams coming to the varsity basketball team tomorrow night to do introductions, ask, I believe, for the kids. And then they're gonna stand in line, come up to varsity players, and go through them, stuff their hands. Just getting them involved is just gonna develop that capacity that we want in a program and build, eventually build our participation numbers in our sports, which we desperately need for the small schools. So thanks again for that. I included the injury data over the past couple of months, and some implications that trainer and I derived from that data. There's a lot of data there, so if you have any questions on that, just let me know. The COVID study I reported last January that we took place in, and the findings weren't, you know, we kind of anticipated the findings that were there, right? And mask mitigates the risk of transmittable, transmitting COVID within sport. So we were one of the thousand schools that took part in that, and I include the findings there for you. The steering committee met early before Christmas break, and we really had to decide what football looked like here next year. We took a sort of a different approach to the teams that we're gonna offer next year, based on the numbers and the number of sophomores and freshmen that we have really allowed us to make the decision that we did, have to modify 11-man teams and no JV team or varsity team. We gotta get those numbers to section four, so they can start making the schedule. A good thing going into next school year for the football programs, that we're gonna be class D, so we're gonna be, we work class C, which is a tough division, class D's no Cape Walk either, with some tough teams in class D, but it will be better competition for our 11-man team coming back to make it. So we're happy that we're actually in. So we're happy that we're, we're actually in class C. And looking at the numbers, these are initial numbers, uh, in PE class, but when we look at those numbers, we feel like they're pretty solid numbers based on the kids that play this year, the kids that are in rec program right now as seventh graders, I'm sorry, as sixth graders. So we feel like those are pretty solid numbers and that's why we came to that conclusion. And I guess that's it. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Next is Angie, so we have her written report. And then Kim.
Hello. Uh, the first item is Wayne and I did put together, uh, a short presentation on early release day in January for his building. Zeroed in on vocabulary instruction. After meeting with the department chairs, they asked for strategies for those tier-two lists of words by grade level. We were able to provide them with that. And a tool, an online tool, it's called Academic Word Finder, that they can go in and they can cut and paste a text or part of a text into it and it'll actually show them which words are tier-two, well, tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three words that they could highlight in a lesson. So tried to provide them with some practical, useful tools that they could walk right out with and use. So that was helpful. And then one part of that I didn't put in the, the report. Wayne, Katie, Brett, and I met, I think it was just last week, maybe it was earlier this week, I don't know, I think it was last week. From this, uh, we are putting together a learning walk observation tool. So it'll be pretty explicit with, you know, here are the steps. This is what, what good instruction around vocabulary would look like. And we're putting together a process that we will be able to go in, do a quick learning walk, five minutes, 15 maximum, but probably even closer, five to 10 minutes and just pop in, check off, you know, did we see this, 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 this? And they will leave that and give them feedback immediately. So it's not in the report, but it's a work in progress and hopefully we can start using that next month. The next fuller item is just giving you the update on where we're at with computer-based testing. So that all happened in the spring, but every school in the state had to go through the simulation. So we had third grade and seventh grade math last week and all went well, but we're, we've been doing the CBT for quite a while, uh, computer-based testing, so I think we, we've got it done. We just recognized that the kids need to practice. They need, especially third graders. This is the first time they're going to take that assessment and I think Katie or Matt, anything you would want to add?
Just that, you know, many, many schools sort of treat it like it's, like a mini state test and I think that we approach it very differently as a, a learning tool for teachers to teach math, but they're using the CBT platform as the way to, to do that. So we, we really don't miss instruction just for them to practice using this tool. Uh, they're kind of using the tool to teach the math.
And the last item, so junior high, the junior high team will be administering the iReady diagnostic here during the midterm days next week. We just finalized that schedule this week.
Thanks. And Matt?
Hello. So, um, the website is moving on very quickly. Um, I believe we're going to be able to launch next Wednesday or Thursday to, to do the actual switch-over. And the app is now in, in the app stores, so feel free to, to look that up and download it. Uh, the app to G is providing us with a lot of materials to promote that over the next few months. Obviously, we'll start promoting it next week with the launch of the app, but I think that, or the launch of the website. But I think that the, now that we've, we've taken all of the different social media platforms that were out there, um, so Pete had a Twitter, Comfort Athletics, and as we had a Facebook account that was, was not really used by anybody. And so we've kind of consolidated them all and brought them under the, the one roof of the, the website. And now we can start pushing, pushing things out and we started doing that with the snow day, or the two-hour delays and the snow day this week, so that those messages are starting to make it out on, on all the social media, which I think is really exciting. Um, and the website's not done. It will just be, it will continue to grow and be a living, uh, place. Uh, so we're excited to, to be able to offer that, uh, to the community and really promote what we're, the great things that we're doing. So, um, it's, it seems like it's rapidly quick, but it's been a long time coming too. So, uh, it'll be nice to stop looking at every page and try and make sure we have all the mistakes caught, but I'm sure there will still be some. Any questions on the website before we finish? So the second thing there is I always, every year I try to encourage families to be part of the, the team in terms of monitoring what their, their children are doing on their devices. Uh, and we, the district, because we are monitoring their Chromebooks actively, uh, they, we have tools that are available to parents. So I try to just promote those things every year. And when we look, um, at, at this as an admin team, it, the, one of the tools where the, the parents and we get alerts, bar, the, the statistics on it, out of the, all of the parents' emails that we have, 50% or a little over 50% already has that, um, account set up. So, so that was great. We're really just continuing to try and, and get more people, uh, those tools in their hands so that they can be part of, um, part of the solution, uh, to, to catch things before they become a problem. And, um, I think the, the most, for, for many families, for their children that are on Chromebooks, the one tool that is through ProGuardian is, that's really great, is the ability to shut it off, um, on a schedule. So if you don't want your Chromebook on from nine to six in the morning, uh, you can shut it off as a, as a parent. And, uh, I think that it's challenging enough to monitor what children are doing on, online, especially when they say they have homework and they have their Chromebook in their room. Uh, it's nice to just say, okay, we're done with that at a certain time. And, um, to be able to offer that as a, a tool, I really am happy to, to speak to any parent that is confused or needs extra help, always available to chat and help, help with solutions. So always looking to, to bring families on board for helping to monitor what's going on online. And the district technology plan is, is due at the end of this year. It's actually due in April. And so the, the process has been started. Ben and I started working on it about a year ago. And we are, um, developing our goals and our action steps and I'll be presenting those to you guys, uh, next month. We are already getting feedback from, uh, like, uh, two librarians and we're, we'll get feedback from teachers next week and continue to, to sort of expand that, um, with, with the board and then with the public as well. Ask for some feedback on, uh, on the technology plan. The plan is a, a three-year plan. So it's sort of looking at where we are now and how we, where we want to go and how we're going to get there. So, um, we're looking forward to sharing that with you guys, huh?
What grades have Chromebooks at home? Probably seven, 12?
Seven, at this point, seven, 12, unless they're, uh, home for an extended period, then they, they pick up a device and can take it home. If, yes.
Holly, hello. Okay, so I shared a lot of information, um, with you just about the trainings that we've been doing. So I know that you were aware that Pete and I have been going through some training, so I just kind of wanted to explain what they are and what we'll be able to do with that. So we talked, I talked about the SBDI. Pete and I will do a two-hour presentation on February 2nd to the bus drivers that will be videotaped and then sent up to Syracuse for them to review and then they grade us and tell us whether we passed or not. Hopefully we pass and then we're certified. But that'll give us all those trainings that I listed from the courses. And then tomorrow and Saturday and next week, Friday and Saturday, we go out for the 19A training. And the 19A training, this Article 19A that really drives the safety piece for the drivers and all the, um, it's all paperwork basically, but it's the defensive driving. But this is biennial, the other physical, the biennial test, the abstract review and, um, so pulling the abstract and then reviewing the abstract with the driver every year. The defensive driving, you go out with them and you're watching them and scoring basically. Biennial testing, so every other year, so you do a brand test and another driving test along with the defensive. What am I missing? But, so anyways, we do that this, the next two weeks. We'll be up there getting trained in that. And then once we're done with those two, those four days, we should be certified in 19A. The new buses, first of all, one of them is a 65 passenger and one is a, I'm going to say 43 passenger. I think that's right. That one is wheelchair accessible as well. It's an awesome bus. It's between our smaller bus and our larger bus and it, um, it's worked well for, we've had on sports trips a couple times, which has been nice, but some teams aren't that big, they only have a 65 passenger, so that's been nice. Um, parts, kind of like we talked about earlier, it continues to be a challenge. So it's not, the prices of the parts haven't necessarily increased, we just can't get the parts right now. Where the tires tripled in price since August. And then I got a bill, um, yesterday for our month for diesel and it has, since December, it's jumped up 36 and a half cents. And when you're buying 1,950 gallons at a time, it's, it shocks, yeah. So that was, um, a little crazy to see yesterday. Um, and then the last item that I had on there, it's been a month, so hopefully we're past that, but, but things happen, so. Yeah, one thing after another, jumping out and good times, so. Do you have any questions for me?
Keep on keeping on. And then there's Mike Williams' report, blog, and then Brett.
So I don't want to keep talking about COVID. I think Wayne and Katie did a really nice job. It's been a problem. The guidelines, they have been guidelines, we're changing daily for over a week and sometimes getting from three different agencies, three different guidelines. It's only funny for me, um, not for the district or HHS, but I was in a meeting with a group of superintendents and one superintendent from the district north of us, uh, outshone the rest of us because he had taken the time to come out the night before and put this view of correspondence together for the families and communities, put it up on the website. And we're all looking at, admiring it, and I'm going to copy that. We got notice that the guidelines changed, just that everything there was wrong. And his, he started getting calls from his administrators and they're getting calls from parents who are not patients. So he left the meeting, um, we went out and covered it and he came back in and said, you know, it was not good. We got that down, we're revising it, going back, he's been with me probably 30 minutes. And the director of Public Health from that county joined our meeting and said, guidelines just changed, I just heard in everything that you did. I haven't had that problem because we have a great team of teachers and a great community. And, you know, like Katie said, we'll get those parent calls. Generally, they're trusting. They just, they just want information and we'll tell them, this is the current information, but it's changing rapidly and daily. They're accepting of that and other places haven't been as fortunate as we have, so I, I feel thankful. And again, because it's been such a great team, other districts, teachers are losing their heads too over it, where ours have just been steady, reliable, and stepping up, as Wayne said, and in Katie's building, the same, the same is happening. They're covering for each other and they're just doing whatever it takes to make sure our students can be safe in school. Lastly, we're not a super struggle. Um, you know, the counties across the state, particularly is converting, fewer, there's less spread, and children are in school than when they're out. I know you all know that, it's because of the job people are doing, so I'm happy about that. We did hold a second vaccination clinic, very well attended, I couldn't be happier with it. We had, what, 250 with the first clinic, because there was a lot of people getting booster shot. The second clinic, we hit just under 200. And again, a good number of students, children, but also adults in our community who either getting booster shot with their second vaccination. People do what's right for them, but that we were able to offer this opportunity feels good. We have a lot of rapid tests. We were out early trying to secure as many free rapid tests as we could and now we're in good shape. So if there's any student, faculty member, anybody who needs a test, we can provide them for our school community. And I was talking with Annie, our nurse, our RN today, and we're trying to gauge, we think right now we may have enough to ride this out. If, I'm, I'm optimistic, but I'm often ridiculously optimistic, but I'm optimistic we're closer to the end. That with the vaccines, also with some people recovering, having and recovering it, with enough views in this and the community, also with treatment, their treatment for coming out. I'm hoping by May, it's a smaller issue, and if that's the case, we'll have enough tests to, to outlast May. Next, if there's no questions on that, I did want to talk a little bit about just one of the many things we're doing as an administrative team that, um, help us get stronger. I put down the DataWise book that Ken is leading, a book study on. And where I put in my notes that in my mind, that's the best form of professional development. What I'm talking about is it's in-house, we're using the expertise that's here. Um, we're using a reliable resource that we can keep going back there, and that's the DataWise book. Reading it together, getting the common language and common understandings, and then we're putting together our own plan. And again, all the experts that went through it, like having an outside speaker come in, we're all still here. We keep bouncing those ideas off of each other. And Ken mentioned one of the tools that we, as a team, developed to help support teachers and to help support instruction. Great hard work from teachers, but even Tiger Woods, who's a great golfer, meets a golf pro who's going to watch him, look for specific things, give him some immediate feedback, come back again later. So that's our, our approach, our approaching approach, and personally, I'm very happy with that. I hope we see some results really quick and you'll be happy with this. I, I'm sure we will. And then the last thing I, I, you know, thank you for talking about Sue and about Angie Holmes. She's done a great job for the district. Very happy that she's, um, got an opportunity that she was hoping for. And very, very happy to be here at Kendra, where as you know, the administrative team and teacher team stepped up so we can cover, and I don't believe that our students or families will see a glimpse in the level of service that they're providing, even with someone as talented and dedicated as Angie taking another position. I got, before we get questions in here, one more thing. I was supposed to get a picture of all of you for the earbuds, so I'm gonna try, has anybody who has a phone to take it out? We'll get one of you standing in front of us, but I think if you're really photographing pictures of you working, so I'll take a picture. Whoever takes the best picture wins. Kind of turn this way, I think to give you the best picture.
Wait, where are the other of you working?
Right where they are.
We're looking, we look down the line.
Somehow I have this stupid timer. Oh, no. We could like Photoshop your faces and hide each other's, yeah.
And now we're working? Oh, we're working.
That wasn't working.
Are there, are there any on the on the record official work comments besides our peanut gallery?
I'd just like to thank Angie as well, um, and thank you for leaving Patrick in. Good luck.
I agree. I think we all are grateful for what Angie has done and wish her best for Spencer, and I know she'll make it a much better one. And you've all done great, I was really happy to hear about the farming, DataWise. You guys are doing a great job, you're all working together, and I wish we could help you more.
I've heard some horror stories about lack of community or or pulling together in the face of all this fight, so I'm, I'm really thankful, again, that the good are all covering faces and doing what you need to do and keep kids in school where they should be, but thank you.
I think the candor of the faculty staff do this time after time. When we get pushed into a corner, there's that willingness to help out however you can, and it extends through everybody who works through the district. We've seen that in the past, and it's good to see it happening again. And Angie, good luck, that Spencer has got a jewel which hopefully appreciated.
All right, yeah, I mean, they get their their Christmas left in is cool, incidentally. All right, so we are up in this 7:58 adjourned, and we are going to have another session, right? Thank you.